Monday, February 2, 2026, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council Roll Call.
Susan Spears.
Joseph Jones.
Fletcher Berry.
Here.
Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Teresa Arms.
Here.
Please join me in the Blood of Allegiance. Blood allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I'm a second.
Roll call.
Susan Spears.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Fletcher Berry.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Arms.
Yes.
3A, presentation from Walnut Creek Watershed.
Hi, my name is Cassie Drool, and with me today is Rob Austin, and we are from Polk County Public Works, but we are also two of the coordinators for the Central Iowa Watershed Management Authorities, or WMA. Windsor Heights is part of the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority, and so today we wanted to just give you an update on what we've been up to, and also talk about some goals that we have for the next five years throughout the watershed to help keep our watersheds healthy. So, we developed a five-year implementation plan last year, or actually, yeah, last year, because it's 26 now. So, in 2025, we completed a five-year implementation plan to plan out the next five years of possible projects that we could do to keep our watersheds healthy, prevent flooding, also improve water quality. The original watershed management plan was completed, I think, it's been a long time, and they pretty much completed a lot of the goals that were in there, or some of the goals had changed. So, that was the whole point of the Watershed Management Authority coming together and saying, what's next? So, we came up with an action-oriented plan. You can see the yellow outline is the Walnut Creek watershed, and Windsor Heights sits kind of at the south end of that. Yep, next slide, please. So, we hired McClure as well as Cebec Eco-Engineering as the consultants to help us develop this five-year implementation plan, but they got feedback from all the communities that lie within the watershed, including Windsor Heights, on what your concerns are for watershed health in your community, and what do you hope to see improve in the next five years? So, we had some state quarterly meetings. We also had one-on-one meetings with communities to figure out exactly what we could do to hold water on the landscape, and also improve water quality, and make sure that the floodplain is healthy, and also educating the public like we are today to let you know what we're up to. So, we came up with five goals, and Rob's going to go ahead and describe those to you today.
Yeah, like Cassie said, my name's Rob Austin. I'm a water resources planner for Polk County Public Works. Based on some of the input we got from the municipalities within the watershed, one of the major things we heard was storing water on the landscape or flood prevention. So, goal number one is holding water on the landscape. Goal number two is to preserve and expand, reconnect, and rehabilitate floodplains. So, think stream restoration projects, flood benching, connecting back to the floodplain, landscape, vegetation maintenance, getting rid of invasive plants and putting native plants back in. Goal three is better understand and improve surface water quality. There was a decent amount of E. coli found in the Walnut Creek. So, we are actively working to target potential sources for that and treatment options for that. Goal four is a regional collaboration awareness. We are currently doing the awareness part right now. You guys are sitting in it. So, we are speaking to city-elected officials, letting you guys know what's going on. We actively have community projects, too. Cassie does a lot of outreach. We have a festival for the watershed, just letting the community know what we're up to and how they can make a difference as well, because everybody in the watershed can be a part of the solution to this. And then, goal five, sustain implementation through monitoring and reporting. We, it's basically just a tracking spreadsheet. We have quarterly reports where we're meeting with all the municipalities, letting them know how much closer to they're getting to their goal, or what we can do to achieve these goals. Excellent. So, specifically into the weeds, some of the numbers. Annually, throughout the whole watershed, we're looking to add an additional 250 acre-feet of storage. Windsor Heights is a pretty small portion of the watershed, so we did that on a percentage basis. So, for you guys, it's 2%, so a half-acre foot per year. Floodplain improvements, Windsor Heights, three and a half acres per year. Surface water monitoring, kind of getting back to that E. coli. We do have an active plan. We're working with a couple of municipalities to do some some rapid water testing to try to find out what the source is. Regional collaboration, like I said, annual city council presentations to let you guys know what's going on, and then our watershed festival to keep the community informed what we're doing. And finally, monitoring and reporting, like I said, quarterly reports where we just talk through some of the the goals with municipalities and what we can do to achieve those goals. So, yeah, this is our five-year watershed plan. This is year one of year five, so we're just kind of in the infancy of it, but we're hoping that this will give us a good guideline on what projects we can do and where, and help the communities kind of do this collaboratively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Do you guys have any questions?
I'd like to hear more about the.
Heck, yeah.
Projects that we actually have going on that kind of pertain directly to this is some native quarry restoration work that's up and around. The North Walnut Creek leg of North Walnut Creek, Public Works did do biospell kind of revitalization down at Colby Park, part of 74th Street. The stormwater component of that is some hardening of the stream bank and the outfall area that runoff actually goes down into there. So, those are some examples of types of projects that you'll see to allow us to capture and participate, or, you know, at least give our portion and effort towards, you know, the goals that are laid out in these five years. So, it's kind of, I know it's not easy to see what is five, you know, half an acre foot, what does that translate to? Right, but those are the types of projects that you'll see coming forward that the city will be a participant in and try and actively pursue, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, every bit helps.
I'd like to know more about the E. coli.
Yes.
Yeah, so would we. So, that is why, this is, like I said, this is year one. This was somewhat new information to us. We have six or seven sites. I think we did some kind of testing at some large outfalls.
University.
With Drake University, yep. And we've kind of pinpointed a couple of locations where we can maybe concentrate our efforts. So, we are currently in the works to do kind of a rapid testing all at the same time over a couple of week period to see if we can't kind of pinpoint where this is stemming from.
Yeah, it's not easy, because, you know, weather can change where you're getting hotspots as well as time of year. So, we worked with Drake for the last couple of years where they have been testing up and down Walnut Creek in the urban areas and a couple upstream, and they've just kind of found an area that we want to focus even more on. So, what we're doing is we're narrowing our testing area, but then we're going to increase the number of samplings that we do there to just keep further narrowing it down to see if there's any way we can figure out what the source is. But once again, it's not easy. It's not, sometimes it's not as obvious as having like a pipe that's spilling out sewer, and you're like, oh, that's it right there. So, hopefully, as we do more and more testing, we'll be able to at least narrow down where it might be coming from and then do further investigation.
But in case it was a pipe actually leaking, we did alert our sanitary sewer district of the issue. The targeted area doesn't look like there is a sanitary sewer line part of the district that would be responsible, but again, knowing that that's not a precise estimate of where that could be at this point, subject to change.
Yeah, thanks.
And maybe you don't know, but is it to a level in which people should not be interacting with creek? Should they not be going in and out of the water?
Um, I don't think we can really say that one way or another at this point. That's up to the Drake when they wrap it up, but for now, we're not going to raise any alarms because there just isn't enough data to really say yes or no.
I guess thankfully, it's winter time, too.
Yeah.
So, that kind of helps a little bit in that where I don't think everybody's trying to traipse around, and I'm not.
We are.
Safely, though.
In waiters, yeah.
I will say thank you for doing that for us.
Yeah.
But I.
Don't have to.
Thank you very much, too, because they don't get paid to do it.
Um, I know that last year, the watershed event was here. Where is that? I know that you kind of randomly go around.
We rotate it. So, this year, or yeah, this year, on, I think it's May 7, it's going to be in partnership with the Urbendale Sustainability Fair at their library. So, down at the Arboretum, we're going to have a bunch of booths set up, just like we did with you guys, and we'll hopefully have just as nice weather and just as successful an event, and then I'll be back around with you guys, you know, in the next few years to say, do you want to do it again? So, this is what we're trying to do, especially with the regional collaboration. Like, we're trying to let everyone know, like, yes, you have your city limits, but watersheds don't have city limits, and so we, communities have to work together a lot of ways to make any sort of progress on keeping our watersheds healthy. So, the festival is just our way of public education and awareness, because, you know, not everyone knows that this stuff is going on. It's kind of an invisible thing that we do a lot of times, so. But it's important, so that's why we're here to talk to you about it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. I also brought some annual reports. I'll just leave them on the chair if anyone wants one.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Public Forum. This is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business. Other than those listed on the agenda, no action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. It's an agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Spears.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Fletcher Berry.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Arms.
Yes.
6A, consideration of FY '26 ERP purchase of Public Works Truck Number Six.
Got files.
I got files. Thanks for noticing. Good evening, Mayor Council. Before you tonight, I stand here requesting the purchase of, the replacement for Truck Number Six. Just real quick, you know, just run through the staff report here. There's some information in here that I would like to touch on. Truck Number Six is one of two trucks, heavy-duty trucks that is in our fleet. It's our big dump truck and big plow truck. We had just accepted delivery and put into service Truck Number Five within, well, just over the last month, about the last six weeks. That truck was ordered in March of 2023. So, not quite two years, but almost two years from the time the order was placed to the time it was delivered and actually put into service. The lead time for the replacement for Truck Number Six is still about that same timeframe. What we're being told is about a two-year lead time, and that's due to a number of issues within the supply chain itself. But I did seek out a quote from Ascendance Truck Centers, which is formerly O'Halloran International, same place that we had bought Truck Number Five from, and the pricing is under Sourcewell through the international contract under that program itself. Kind of a cost breakdown a little bit here, just for the cabin chassis itself, is just under $115,000. The equipment outfit package for that, which would include things like the body, the plow, the plow mounts, the hydraulic system, the pre-wet system, all of the components that basically make the truck look like a truck, total the amount of $156,915.95. And then, the dealer is offering a trade-in value of current Truck Number Six at $45,000. So, just a little bit of comparison to the order that was placed a couple of years back, the cabin chassis price increased about $2,000. The equipment package increased about just under $18,000, bringing a total cost increase of right around $20,000. You factor in the decrease in the value of the trade-in, and we're looking at about a $33,000 total increase, basically the same truck in a matter of two years. It's the trend with equipment, maintenance items. Everything really is kind of jumped up due to a lot of reasons, but just wanted to put that kind of perspective out there of what we're looking at, not only us, but other agencies as well, of just the increase in cost of equipment. The specifications for Truck Number Six pretty much mirrored what was specified for Truck Number Five. There's a couple of reasons for that. International is local. The other vendor, Henderson Trucks, is up at Northeast Iowa, so anything from a service standpoint would be well out of our way from a timely repair or any warranty work. Keeping the same trucks with the same equipment allow for the interchanging of parts allows our staff to seamlessly operate those without having to learn different types of equipment, and they could easily be dispatched in the same amount and manner with the same training with what we currently have. According to industry standards, this comes from the APWA. The average useful life for this type of vehicle is about eight to 12 years, and that comes from, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into that, how the equipment's used, how it's maintained, how it's operated, what's it doing? But right now, currently, as it sits, Truck Six is on that kind of higher end of the useful life. It's at a 12-year point in its life right now. The other component to that useful life is, is what kind of economic benefit does it provide the city? As we continue to go on, over the course of years, it's going to cost more to operate, and the value of that piece of equipment is going to decrease. So, it's going to become economically less viable to own and operate that equipment the longer its life continues on. So, some information just on the repairs of what we've spent in the last five years. What I could find was the city has spent $66,476 on the repair and maintenance of Truck Six, and that's in a five-year period. We did have this conversation with the Public Works Committee. Sort of a recommendation out of that was to proceed with the purchase. One of the questions that did come up in that was just the warranty of the truck and equipment itself. I provided the committee with that, but I just wanted to touch on that a little bit. So, there's two warranties on this particular vehicle. One is the standard warranty on the cabin chassis system itself, and there's kind of a spread of different types of types of repairs and kind of coverages within that. The second warranty is on the engine itself, and that's a 60-month, so a five-year, 100,000-mile warranty on the engine, and that includes any after-treatment, which is the def system or the exhaust system itself. So, that, it is my recommendation to seek your approval for the purchase of that. I would be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thanks for putting in the warranty.
You're welcome.
Any questions? For a moment.
Susan, you're in Public Works. Is this?
Oh, we, I don't know how many people were there. I don't know how you want to judge it. It was Burgess and I and Fletcher.
Yeah.
And then.
I'm online.
Oh, you were online?
Yeah.
So, I think we all just agreed. I don't think there was really a formal vote.
Yeah, the questions were about the warranty and kind of what was kind of outlined within that. We talked in committee, too, about the reasons kind of sticking with international. You know, and then, I mean, that was really kind of the gist of that conversation. We do have, I just throw some other stats out here. The truck itself currently. I got a few things, and I'll do that. Okay. We put about 2,000 miles annually.
Yourself out of it.
All the year. Okay, last point is.
Andy.
Susan Spears.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Fletcher Berry.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Truck, man.
Yes.
Teresa Arms.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that is a cool thing, right? With the tracking, right?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
Okay, now I want to hear it.
Yeah, so, ADL's automatic vehicle locator, it provides a couple of different things. I'll just go back.
I did get my one motion out of the way for the air.
ADL system.
So rich with fire.
Because we can track real-time where those trucks are at, what they're doing. Think of this, and it's not going to be as exorbitant or expansive as like the Iowa DOT Track-a-plow, at least not yet. But there's a couple of things. The first biggest component is a liability aspect. So, if those trucks are ever in an incident, an accident, we have a record to go back on to see actually what the conditions were at that time when that incident took place. The other thing it does is allows us to optimize snow routes, plow routes, especially when it comes to winter maintenance. So, that is a really neat tool that you guys will see going forward. We'll start to utilize that system, broadcast that out in the newsletter this month. There's a little blurb in that, kind of highlighting that, where we can post like road conditions real-time, so everybody can kind of generally see what things look like when we're out there. So, very neat system that is included as an option on this truck that we've opted to go with, so.
Did you say that it had a camera, the front and rear cameras, too? Did you say?
It has one facing forward, so it's the front of the vehicle, but it also has an end cab, so I can see the driver and inside of the cab. It doesn't have on the backside, but it's got AI technology to kind of, when those incidents, there's triggers that kind of allow the system, I don't know how it all works, but there's no actual physical camera on the back end of it. Okay, thank you.
Sorry to cut you off.
6B, discuss FY '27 budget.
So, this is the kickoff to the public-facing portion of our budget process. Department heads have been hard at work over the last four months, working on their department budgets and refining it. Rochelle and I. So, tonight's intent is really to address any high-level questions you might have on the proposed budget that's in front of you, and then we'll be working through individual council meetings, finance committee meetings over the course of the next several weeks, and then coming into the work session for the budget in several weeks here. This year's a little more challenging budget than what we've seen the last year. Continue to see some legislative pressures put on the budget. We've also seen a decline in interest rates over the last six months, which is impacting the revenues that we're receiving from that, and continue to see fuller employment than we've seen historically over the last three to four years, which kind of align projected expenses on salaries and wages and benefits with actual expenses incurred. So, Rochelle, you want to just kind of give a quick refresher, I guess, on how we actually look at a budget coming into the season and some of the tweaks that we've been doing over the last year or two to refine that?
Yeah. In the past, we've budgeted, let, in a way that makes sense. I think the snow budget is the best, or the snow, that, those line items. We budget based on if there's snow events that happen, that could happen, the maximum amount that is possible could happen. And then, so your budget looks really inflated, but your actual expenses always come in under that. What we've done or started to do is compress that. So, instead of thinking it's snow-mageddon every day, we're going to tighten that up and see if we can't get ourselves closer to what our actual expenses are. Now, what that can mean is that we might have to do more budget amending than we have in the past, but we'll happy to do that. But this gives us a little bit better indicator about where we truly are expense-wise versus what's budgeted. This was something that was kind of eye-opening to AJ, because he kept saying, well, what's the budget saying? I said, the budget's great, but that's an estimate. But let's look at the actuals. Let's see where we are in the actuals. So, that was a, that was a good lesson this time, I think. And then, helping you guys see where the actuals are versus what's budgeted. So, I think what we're going to do is even in the next, probably even starting this month, we're going to maybe do some different financials so that you can see closer where are we budgeted versus actual. So, does that make sense? Do you want me to spend, work through?
Yeah, I want to just roll into the kind of budget intro there.
Um, really, I'm just going to skip into the budget schedule. Tonight's our budget kickoff meeting. We do have the updated CIP and ERP in your packet, and obviously, public forum. We're tonight, of that. And then, I've talked to most of you, individual meetings with council, but I, Joseph, I didn't, and Teresa, I didn't, because we're going to do the personal finance. Unless you want something else, that's perfectly fine. We can do that. So, we'll do those. Actually, it'll be this week. It sounds like everybody's going to be able to get to us this week. And then, Personnel and Finance Committee review the proposed budget on 2/13, and then we'll bring it back on 2/16 to a work session. So, and then after that, it's just public hearings, da-da-da-da-da. Most of that stuff is just a public hearing piece. Council, balls and objections, objections are four, five, and six, and I think you guys are going to talk about that next. So, if you want to just go to the executive summary, we are proposing an increase of 15 cents to the total tax levy rates. This will help mitigate the spend-down of the special revenue levy fund balance. It's proposed to be at 14.36 per thousand of taxable valuation. We have actually been working diligently to decrease operational costs, and the guys have been phenomenal. I can't even tell you. We've come up with so many really, really good ideas about what we can do and how we can do it differently so that we can lower expenses. And I don't know what the dollar figure, Adam, did we come up, like, was it what, 170?
$170,000 in either revenue increases or expenditure decreases, and not just budgeted, expenditure increases, actual decreases.
Actual expenditure.
Revenue increases, yeah.
That was really, that's phenomenal. These guys, you guys have been amazing, so. The property, so the changes to the revenue, property tax valuations increased by 2.7%. So, what that equated to in actual dollars for the general fund, I think this helps people understand, that was $59,740. That was my increase this year. That's what I got to work with. That's what we all got to work with. So, it is a little bit challenging when you look at $59,000 increase, and then even, but even if we look at salaries, just from general fund perspective, and the actual salaries are 2.8 million. If I increase that by just 3%, that's $85,000. So, already, I'm out of whack, just, and I, I don't have the ability to say, nope, no wages. We have unions. So, those things are pretty varied.
And the interest is the other big piece of that, about $62,000 less of budgeted interest next year based off of what we're seeing in rates from kind of year-to-date last year.
Yeah, so that doesn't help anything. And then, of course, all the exemptions for 65-plus homeowners, exemptions for veterans, which are all beautiful from a, the standpoint of helping homeowners, but your finance director doesn't really have those.
What was the, like, if you go back two years or three, whatever they, before they made this change, what were we, what were the property tax valuations increased by? Do you have any idea?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can get it for you. Yeah.
Just trying to figure out how much we've lost, for lack of a better term?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's great. I'm sure I can pull that for you, but I just don't have it in front of me. The other thing that is happening is lost revenues are decreasing. The other thing that is happening is lost revenues are decreasing. And this is put out by the state. So two, they were saying 2%, 2.1% was what they were expecting it to decrease. So hopefully they're wrong, but let's see what happens. And then there's the city controlled enterprise and capital improvement funds. Nothing has changed there except that our ERUs for stormwater fees are going up in FY26 by 50 cents. So that'll help our stormwater fund. The annual fee schedule for 27 will be, is proposed to go into effect upon passage of the code update, which is expected in the next couple of months, is that? The budgeted expenses. Budget expenses are estimated at 8.4 million. That excludes capital projects, the ERP and debt service. And FY26 budgeted expenses were 8.1 million. This is an increase of 361,969 or 4.4%. But we did want to point out that that number includes TIF rebates, which increased our budget by 325,000 and stormwater fund expenses of 200,000. So if you take those two items out, which are pretty hefty, we actually have expenses for FY27 at 7.9 million, which is a decrease of 2%. So there's where we, there's where we worked our magic, I guess, a little. The next page is the capital improvements projects. Completion of 68th Street South and 73rd Street North. 74th Street will be a full reconstruction. We have cash on hand. 77th Street and Mott Avenue are mill and overlays. We do have cash on hand to fund those projects. And then 65th Street Storm Sewer, there's stormwater funds on hand for that. And then ERP purchases for FY27. One thing I do want to point out, the, the actual ERP is in the back of your binder. But if you look under fire and EMS, for FY26, we had that the ambulance was going to be purchased in FY26, but the balance is actually going to happen in FY27. So that is in there now. It's added in. It's already been budgeted for FY26. I just needed to move it for expenditures to FY27. And then the dump truck final payment will happen in FY27. Maybe it might get moved to 28 depending. And then local auction sales tax, we have that going to the community event center, the library, which is estimated at 75,000. That's probably high. It's at 69 right now, so probably won't be 75, but we don't have a new, a new 28E until May.
It'll wrap up at the end of this current fiscal year, so we'll be entering in conversations with presumably the city of Des Moines to negotiate another five year contract with them or somebody for library services.
Funding the equipment replacement plan, the comprehensive plan is in here at 75,000. Future street projects at a million and then unallocated at 48,000. We did put potential future street projects if we do have that 48,000. I didn't want to budget all of it in case the estimates come in lower than what they, what they assumed. So that, there's that. Any questions about any of that?
Just a quick reminder, Rochelle, the ERP dollars that we're putting in annually, those come from lost?
They usually come from lost. Some of them come from road use tax.
Okay.
And then it does give you some financial snapshots on page 10 and 11 for revenues and expenses. So you see where the bulk of our spending is and our revenues. And then 12 and 13 are financial snapshots for the five year trends. And then we get into the departmental pages. And you guys tell me, what do you want? If you, I don't have any deal, any need to sit here and read to you. So if you guys want to just let me know if you, how you want me to do it, I'm happy to. Happy to do it whatever way you want.
So I guess I just want to acknowledge that I think that, you know, the things that we've been talking about for the course of the last couple of years with tightening budgets and the realization of the property tax legislation that went in a few years ago and the pending property tax legislation. Tightening our belts is certainly going to be, it's something we've been talking about and not necessarily something we did. And so it's, it's, it appears as though it's catching, catching up to us at this point in time. I'm actually a fan of zero based budgeting, so that would not hurt me to go that direction. I think it is responsible budgeting personally. But appreciate what you've done and put together here in an effort to do, you know, do the best that we can. And I think we're going to have to just continue to figure, be good stewards and prioritize. And especially as we look at, you know, looking at the ARP, we just funded a new truck. And, and I know that those monies are there, but if those are, there are going to be significant reductions in loss because people aren't spending, you know, people aren't spending money and that those revenues aren't coming in because the state's economy is not in a great place. Then I just think that we need to just be really cognizant of that as we're, as we continue to go through this process.
Very mindful of what's ahead and where we could end up. And really, we've been looking at this at the perspective of fiscal year 29, when we end up losing another.
62,000?
$62,000. When we have to go to the 10, because right now we're, it's, we are able to go to 8.31. That's what we, that's what our levy can be at. But then they're going to push us down to 810. So that will be another reduction. And unfortunately, other cities or bigger cities that are growing, they have their valuation, they grow, but we do not. So, or if we do, it's very small, a small amount. So it's definitely something we're going to have to be mindful of and really look at ways we can do things differently.
Teresa, I did forget to say when we were talking public works, we did talk about the maintenance records. So hopefully now that we have a maintenance path, we can really kind of work those machines out a little bit longer versus since we don't use them quite as frequently as. So we did, that was something that we did talk about to try to ensure that we were on that path since we just started that, what, a year ago, really? Maybe two, so.
I will say my biggest worry is how do we, how do we continue to make the infrastructure upgrades and needs that we need to make as a community? When the resources aren't there to do it, like, that's my biggest concern, so.
Appreciate the beyond FY27 opportunities. Those are largely ways that we can continue to maybe cut, cut measures, cut savings or the costs. Is there any like outlandish things that other cities have done to grow revenues? I mean, there's only things that we can do, but is there anything just off the wall idea that?
None that have passed councils. I mean, there's, there's thoughts out there. Sell parks, that's, people are doing that. There's cities that are selling their parks. You could sell the CEC, you could, there's things out there that are, they're, they're out there. And we can bring them to you guys if you want them. If we had multiple parks, it might be a different story, but we don't. So, but I think we can increase our fees, we can increase some fees. That's something that, it's something we hadn't, we hadn't been doing prior, prior to even, I think prior to AJ. We really hadn't thought, looked at those fee increases. So maybe continuing, continuing to increase fees where it's warranted because we have been really low. So these happen. But that's not going to, it's not going to do what we really need it to do, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars.
The, the probably clearest path to address infrastructure outside of property tax revenue is special assessments on residents on streets that are being improved. And that is always a challenging thing to do and striking the right balance of what percentage of those improvements should be placed as a special assessment versus funded through other means, lost or otherwise. But when you talk about hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue for capital project improvements, that is probably the clearest potential source of revenue to fund those infrastructure improvements.
And unfortunately, our biggest one, which is 73rd Street, that's, we can't do it.
We're going to have the creek.
You've got challenges there. Fortunately, our major road corridors, all, all are within urban renewal districts and our financial constraints are not as strong in those urban renewal areas. And so we do have some flexibility there, whereas the general fund and the special revenues fund, which funds employee benefits, hypers, that is really where the strongest constraints are on our side.
And of note with that is that our TIF fund is very, very healthy. And the amount of money that we're bringing in for TIF that can be used on TIF projects is very healthy. So like this year, we're going to bring in probably $400,000 more than we did last year with TIF. So I know it's complicated, but they are, they are separate buckets. I think you guys get that. They are separate buckets. You cannot use them for projects that are not within the urban renewal area or within our urban renewal plan. Unfortunately.
And so the economic development piece is probably the other piece of the opportunities to be creative. When you're constrained on expanding out, you can invest in densification, the highest invest use, try to raise property tax revenues there. But that is always, we're typically a very expensive endeavor to set up those properties for redevelopment and then a long-term perspective before you really start realizing those gains. So it's really a 10, 20 year period before you really start to achieve the benefits of those economic development efforts when you're looking at whole scale redevelopment.
Anybody have anything else they want? I can go into depth on any of these.
Where will the, I mean, actually you won't know right now, but where with, if no other city changes their levy, where will we fall in relation to the ranking in the metro?
From the metro perspective, we're typically fairly close to Norwalk and under Des Moines. And then as you go out into sort of the outer ring, older exurbs, the Newtons kind of areas, they tend to be at or above ours. And then as you get into the kind of the first or second ring suburbs, the ones that are experiencing a lot of growth, they tend to be a dollar or two less than us. So you'll typically see us, depending on what you consider the metro area, under Des Moines, a little bit under Norwalk. If you expand out that sort of the older communities, that kind of date to when Windsor Heights was truly developing, we tend to be pretty closely aligned or a little bit under the levy rates in those communities.
So you're telling me we're still towards the top?
When you're looking at the suburbs that are growing, absolutely. We have them down about $2 on the levy rate from where the city was eight, nine years ago.
Right.
Even six, seven years ago when I started here. Yeah. It dropped, it got dropped.
But I do think a lot of that is reflected in the infrastructure work that needs to happen in an older community. When you're in a newer community, the cost of putting in that new infrastructure largely is bore by the developers.
Yeah.
Whereas we're reconstructing streets. A city like Johnston typically isn't reconstructing a street that was put in 15, 20 years ago. Just a couple of comments on CIP as well. One thing that we've spent a lot of time on in the last few weeks is looking at our debt schedule of existing bonds that are out there. The fiscal year 29 change in levying policy and trying to figure out how we're going to time that out with the 73rd Street reconstruction and the other residential street reconstructions that are come, come online at that point. So you will see just a couple of tweaks, kind of a two-year timeframe for a few of those CIP projects, indicating that council probably have a decision point in fiscal year 28, 29 of when you want to go out to bond. Because we do have a significant general fund or general debt levy bond payments that start dropping off at end of fiscal year 30. And so timing that new bond issuance with the conclusion of a big portion of our existing bond payments to try to balance out your levy rate will be a consideration at that timeframe. And if you want to hold those levy rates steady, you might want to push back some of those capital improvement projects a year or two. Or if you're willing to let that rise a little bit for a year and then come back down the following year, that would allow kind of the more aggressive CIP plan that's out there. That in addition with whether there's a build grant that's obtained on 73rd Street or other changes to the scale or size of that project that the city would have to fund.
Because will the railroad, will that have, will it take a big effect on this product?
So as you may have seen in the Friday update, Norfolk Southern has submitted for abandonment of that line that goes through Windsor Heights, Clive, West Des Moines, all the way up to Grimes. We're still interpreting what that could all mean for the future of that property and how it may or may not interact with 73rd Street. So expect to have more to come on that in the coming weeks or months.
Teresa, do you have any ideas about what's going on? Is there anything that's like, do we think, oh, this is absolutely going to happen?
Get out my.
I just pulled my case, what's, what's, you can bet on weird things.
Could we like at least hope that they're going to give us an increase in our local option sales tax of a penny?
I wouldn't bet on it.
That would be beautiful if they.
So just a quick update. So the House did pass their version and the governor's version through subcommittee last week. And so that can go to the Ways and Means Committee at any point in time. So those are moving through the process. I don't know what the idea is on that. The Senate introduced today their school increase at a dollar 75, I think, for, for the SSA numbers. So, and the governor recommended $2 and I don't know where the House will come in. So I'm guessing it'll be somewhere around that two, $2. Or 2%, I'm sorry, 2%. So the fact that they're going to ideally or hopefully make their self-imposed deadline on that, I think shows that there'll be progress to kind of get the budget done in a timely manner. And then certainly the property tax component will play a significant role in, you know, the budgetary component. Because as you, I'm sure you've learned, I mean, the Senate proposes to get rid of the back bill completely. Governor in the House version doesn't do that. Actually, I sent out an assess, a side by side comparison of the, the different plans and a summary. I can share that with Adam and send it over to so folks can see what kind of each plan includes. Senator Dawson has been out on guard duty for the first couple of weeks. I did see he started scheduling committee meetings for this week. So I'm expecting, I know this is his first priority. At least that's what he indicated before session started, that he wants to get this bill across the bow first. So I have a, I have an expectation that he'll come in and start working on the Senate's property tax bill in earnest. What's fascinating though about that SSA number, that bill in particular, that came from the Senate, it did not account for the state, for the the legislature picking up the tab for the school funding. So that the fact that that status quo there tells me that that portion in the Senate version probably isn't on the table for discussion. Just my, my guest to bet right now. So I would just say things are moving and I'm guessing that probably more conversations will start in earnest this next week. So I'll keep you posted. I'll send that summary around too, it might be helpful.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything else? I mean, I don't go into detail, obviously, in your, in our meetings.
What's next on the schedule?
Next is the, oh, from that would be the individual meetings and then personal finance meeting next Friday, the Thursday.
Ominous. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? All right. Six C, discuss city council goals.
We typically take a look at these every year. I didn't prepare a summary this year of kind of action steps that have been going on in twenty twenty-five, but really just wanted to bring this forth as a discussion item this evening. Give the council an opportunity to give any feedback, or if you'd like some research done into any particular goal or objective, we're happy to do that and bring that back. But thought is we can start making adjustments here this evening or do some additional research and then bring this back to you late February or early March to approve any changes and get those included onto our website.
The only thing that I looked at and maybe I missed it as I read through. It was late when I read through these, but some type of like succession planning. And just, I know that we've been doing it, but it's always nice to kind of have that in our goals is to make sure that we have the cross-training so that you know, if something were to happen to someone that, you know, if Rochelle goes off to Paris and doesn't ever want to come back, that.
It's always getting hit by a bus.
See, and I didn't use that.
Why would we say that? I think it actually is goal number four, objective.
I like it. Makes sense.
So.
We can certainly outline some of the steps that we're taking on there that are going on, on cross-training, documentation of a lot of our processes as part of that as well. So we can put together a little more of a snippet on that. But example is Adam doing some payroll aspects now and as well. So when Rochelle is out of the office temporarily, most of those items can get handled, but just other steps and procedures far as code enforcement and other kind of specific staff items, like to get that written down and documented, put in a place that everybody's comfortable accessing so that in an emergency situation, at least they can pull that up and get the step-by-step guide of how to do that. Obviously, the goal is to have a more fluid transition when somebody does retire with some training that would occur in an overlapping period, but that doesn't always happen.
And I don't have any international plans, so.
Yeah, I was trying to give you a trip. I think that doing the comprehensive plan too will give us greater direction and guidance and how we, we focus on this over the course of the next year. When do you want us to get back to you on this with?
By next council meeting, if you have any written feedback, feel free to send it my way and we'll incorporate it into a red line update.
Reports.
Um, yeah, so it's been a little nutty, but I was able to go to the, cause I wasn't able to go to the Bridges ceremony when they did there in October, because I was gone. But so I did go to their ceremony in January and it was super cool to get to kind of see that experience and and there was, they said it was the most people they've ever had attend ceremony. And so it was super cool. There was tons of people there, standing room only. But anyway, so I just thought it was really cool to get to, it was freezing. I did go outside for two minutes. We do, I, I also did the Metro Waste Legislative Reception. I think Windsor Heights had the best representation, of course, at the legislative reception. And there were some fun pictures online if anybody got to check those out. So and then we have Mac tomorrow morning down at the State House bright and early. So I think that's all I've got.
Campbell?
I met with Casey at Bolton Mink to work on the draft of our presentation for the Iowa Parks and Recreation Association meeting in March. Wednesday is Reimagine Dart reception and the Bravo Gala is Saturday. That's all I got.
And I did give Rochelle my money.
Good to go.
Okay. On the twenty-seventh, met with Public Works, we need dive a little deeper in the ERP. Also on the twenty-seventh, attended the Urban Dell Food Pantry Board Meeting, which I sit on. It is the Urban Dell Food Pantry, but they serve residents from across the metro. So I'm happy to be a resource for any Windsor Heights residents that want to be connected with their services. On the twenty-eighth, attended the elected officials reception with Joseph and Susan. It was good to connect with the partnership and other local elected officials. Tended the S P Salon ribbon cutting on the thirtieth chamber event. It's great, great to see a new business in our community. I'll let Susan cover chamber events. I'm sure, we don't need to double up on them, but you can just say I go to all of them. This past Saturday, attended the chambers talk with officials. So that's good to hear from some of our local elected officials as well. It's from the State House. And then this week I'll do my orientation for Icon Water Trail, which I'm excited to represent our city on. And then want to congratulate the mayor on his announcement of running for the House of Representatives. That's all I got.
Good Jones.
Nothing for me? Nothing. True.
Scaries.
So I attended the Chambers AM exchange. Later that day, I attended the Polk County Emergency Management Meeting. I have no idea what it's called. It was kind of like the annual report or something and went over what they were going to do and failed to put that down as to what it was titled. But then I stopped by Public Works for our Public Works meeting and finished the day at the Metro Waste Legislative Event with some great food and drinks. So thanks to Mike, Teresa and Adam for stopping by and being there to represent our city because we really did take it all. We were the best represented group there. I got commented multiple, it got commented multiple times on that. So Wednesday I joined Catch Des Moines Quarterly Meeting and then headed to the Greater Des Moines Partnership Legislative Event with Joseph and Fletcher later on in the evening. Wonderful to meet some newly elected officials as well as reconnect with officials that we don't see very often. Thursday evening, my husband and I, along with Lauren, had the chance to attend the construction event at the New Children's Museum. If you haven't toured their new location yet, let me know. I'd love to set up a time for you to go see it. Friday, I had the pleasure of speaking at the ribbon cutting for S P Salon in place of Mike Jones. Really excited to just see all the ways they'll contribute to our community. Then looking ahead, I'm on the Audit Committee for Metro Waste and then attending the monthly executive board meeting on Wednesday. I've been working on planning our special events budget, coordinating sponsors and finalizing who will be attending our events. We've also finalized our residence picks for the Movies in the Park series and that will be shared by the end of the month, hopefully. That's it.
Just call your attention, there's a staff report on there indicating our intent not to renew the Polk County Animal Control Agreement. There's no specific action there. Expires at the end of this fiscal year. Intent is not to renew it and self-manage that process. And then there's also the minutes for the Public Arts Committee, and I do believe we'll have an agreement for the maintenance of the proposed mural in front of you at the next council meeting. So I think we've got draft language that's agreed upon from staff and called the interest on that, that'll allow us to move forward with the R F Q potentially for that mural in the near future.
Can I just ask a few questions on the, the non-renewal? Not that I'm not for it or anything. So it talks in there about where reasonable that the Animal Rescue League officers will continue to handle, respond to the various calls for service and where reasonable can transport an animal to the A R L. What happens if it's not reasonable? Do we have a backup? Like if, if the A R L can't come out and it's something that you can't just stick, let's say it's a cat, you don't want it in the back of a unless it's crated, are we going to start getting crates? I, I know at one point in time in the back of Public Works, we had some kennels, but last I knew there were special event stuff in there. So just kind of wondering if we have a system in place that we're looking at and that it will be completed in like the next few months before this goes. And then if we'll have kind of a I don't know, for lack of a better term, like I, it kind of for us to at least know how the service is going to run. Like if you get a call, this is what happens because you know, we're going to be asked about it.
Imagine there'll be some questions and Chief, you can fill in any blanks I leave, but we've confirmed the A R L is open twenty-four, seven. And so typically an officer would be able to transport or a city employee would be able to transport that dog to the A R L directly and immediately, more or less. In instances where we may have staff not available, the thought is that we would acquire a small kennel, be kept in public safe or in the public safety garage, allow for a temporary holding place for the dog until staff is freed up to be able to transport them. But from a resident response, I think the intent is it will continue to operate very similar as today. Our police respond to loose dog issues. We'll continue to do so. Do their best to wrangle them to the extent that they can and get them transported over the A R L, check for their tag, which will allow them to get identified and picked back up. Chief, anything you want to add to that? Or I misstated?
Want to walk up through, but we're not going to, we're not going to bear for, you know, twenty calls a year is not worth having them just come down and transport stuff. It's a vicious dog or something. We're not going to try to wrangle it. A lot of cities are going to wave benefit control altogether, you know? We've had residents ask us to reduce fees, especially if you're over sixty-five. So we're trying to cut money into the budget as best we can and six grand first year, you know, which is way over a hundred percent increased and continuing that up. It just was not feasible for us to do that. The officers still have discretion. You know, we're just not made, our cars are not made to transport these things. If we get kennels, we have to kind of run that line of inspections, who, you know, the state has come out and inspected. We don't want to have those fees incurred in that or prove with that. So the officer was some discretion like we do now and the animal control transferred everything for us either. So we just deal with what we can, call D N R if we have to. Residents have some responsibility to in their own property, you know, great friends or what, that, that was pet patrol or predator control or whatever it was back in the day. So there's a lot of options, but the officer will be more involved and yeah, so we still read chips. We still respond to barking dogs on that stuff. To the, the T and R program, hopefully will help us get rid of the cap issue, you know, so that, that's what we're.
And again, I wasn't against it. I just wanted to make sure that we had a plan, that it was put in place prior to us ending this contract and that we all knew kind of what the plan was because I will assume that we will hear something about this.
Anything else?
Nothing for me.
What's your new term?
Don't move.
Okay.
Bold call.
Susan Scaries, Justin Jones.
Yes.
Fletcher Berry.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Hearn.
Yes.